Twenty four, a total of two hundred and fifty nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars and ninety two cents. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by trustee Lachman, thank you. Any discussion? President, call roll.
Trustee Volz.
Aye.
Trustee Agar. Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lachman.
Aye.
Superintendent.
Aye, motion passes. Oh, this is for this time. This is monthly financial investment report, that's a permission for you guys. Review and approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash one, the resolution for depository for funds, Winfield Township. This is just what we do every year, just to say that if you are depositing the funds into a company. Um, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you trustee Lachman, the second.
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Lucas. Any discussion?
I think well, going up every time, nobody here has any connections with it or anything, right?
Right.
Right.
Sorry.
I'm a banker, okay? You know, you didn't know this?
Okay, no more discussion, please call roll.
Trustee Volz.
Aye.
Trustee Agar.
Aye.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lachman.
Aye.
Supervisor.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, review and approval of the approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash two for twenty twenty five holiday days.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you trustee Lachman.
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Lucas. Any discussion? Any none, call roll.
Trustee Volz.
Aye.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Agar.
Oh, you mixed it up, aye.
Yeah, trusty volts. I thought you were gonna call it that again.
Aye. Okay, review and approval of the Winfield Township four duty days for twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you trustee Lachman. I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
Yes, um.
Do we have to hit the panel meeting there?
Um.
That's already been said.
That's already said.
Oh, that's true. Okay. Yeah, that's right.
But, um, I just wanna make a suggestion. Um, I understand that if people will click on a link of their regular, like if the public wants to click on the link, a regular board meeting, they can kinda go through a rabbit hole and find. When we're doing other meetings, like the, um, the road budget and the town budget, instead of having them, you know, um, kind of go through trying to figure out where these are. When you post all of the meetings, can you also post the time of, of the special meetings in addition to the regular board meetings?
Yeah, that can be done.
Yeah, thank you.
Everyone's called the dates correct? Absol- please call roll.
Trustee Agar.
Aye.
Trustee Lucas.
Aye.
Trustee Lachman.
Aye.
Trustee Volz.
Aye.
Supervisor.
Aye, motion passes. Review and approval of the outdated computer equipment to be recycled. So these are the, the computer items that we want to, obviously they've been wiped clean, but just recycle up the recycling unit that's coming up. Motion to approve. Thank you trustee Lachman.
What's the procedure for wiping these things clean out that there's some data in there that comes?
Sorry, that was me.
My name.
Did you say clean button?
We, when, when I.
Cause you always hear of him saying somebody tries to delete something, but then they go find it.
Well, when we get rid of our computers, we take out the hard drive.
Right. Right.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I, I've got a question. Um, are you, uh, doing anything with laptops? Are you also recycling those?
There's no laptop on here right now.
Okay, alright.
Do I have a second for this one, sorry?
Oh, sorry, I thought we were in a discussion already.
That's okay, second.
I'll second, thank you trustee.
Any further discussion?
Just as long as all the information is safe there, so we're not leaving there.
Right. Yeah, and you know, my only, um, part was I know that like, um, in Wheaton, the, um, I can't think of the place where they have the, the resource center in Wheaton. Um, they will take, but I believe they only take laptops, I don't think they take desktops, so just in the future, you know.
Or jackets.
Those two years are you?
I'm, I'm talking about to, to, yeah, 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 they'll, they'll update them, put the department in, and they'll, they'll give the resource center, yeah, that's people's resource, so, um, but I don't think that they take desktops, so, yeah. Just wanna, just a note in the future.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions, I'm sorry?
Hmm, we do.
Please, call roll.
Trustee Lucas.
Um.
Trustee Lachman.
Aye.
Trustee Volz.
Aye.
Trustee Agar.
Aye.
Supervisor.
Aye, motion passes. Discussion of elected officials salary for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine, or twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine. Um, so I gave you guys the list of whatever is making currently and how everyone's doing throughout all the townships, and then, um, just gave you, I guess, just a sheet to actually kinda go through and see, um. To basically remind you that, um, the assessor and the highway department, as well as yourselves and me, we haven't had any raises or increase in, uh, uh, any of that's like, uh, cost of living or anything. I just wanted to remind everybody, um, not that saying bump anything up, I'm not saying that either, but, um, at least just so you know, everything's on there. If you have any questions, I would like to pass something in October, please, cause it has to be done a hundred eighty days prior to the election.
So you want us, you want some suggestions now?
Yeah, of course, we can talk for some suggestions and kind of come to an agreement on things, some things, if you want to.
Okay.
It's just a discussion.
I mean, we'll just throw some numbers out there too, one of, we'll just start from the top.
Yeah.
Um, there's supervisors, one of those ones, I think we should move that up to about seventy. That's just my opinion, I mean, it's with everything you said, cost raised or whatever.
Why about?
Can I comment, or go ahead, man?
No, go ahead, no, I don't. I'm just throwing numbers out there.
So, six, I think it was twen- I think it was sixteen years ago, we went to, every four years, we'd be frozen. So we get a certain amount, and then you're frozen for four years, at least for John and I. And then, because then we said, uh, or they, the board said, we'll take politics out of it, we'll go down it, we'll do a ca- uh, same salary with, uh, cost of living for those four years. Now, for the assessors, a little different, cause mine goes all the way till, my next term doesn't start till twenty twenty six and goes to thirty. So this is paid all the way to twenty thirty. So, and I know cost of living has been higher than it has been, but just the salary that I have plus cost of living, taken from the state's, uh, CPI. And even that is old, because you can't, they don't point four out, so it's twenty, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three, and that comes to, it was one point four percent, one point seven percent, one point six five percent. And one point three percent, and one point three four percent, so that amortizes out, it is nineteen point four eight percent, and that's cost of living. So that's just same salary adjusted for inflation.
I've got a question for you, isn't, um, doesn't your race come up in, in April next year?
Everyone does.
Yeah, but I don't take off, or the assessor does not take office till January first of twenty twenty six.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm a year behind.
He's got no tax bills, he's got no taxes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I got it, I got it, okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't, like, in the middle of the cycle.
Right, I mean, that makes sense. So, um, you know, I'm looking at some of the townships, and some of the other townships, yeah, they, they, they go, one, frozen. Uh, they all, some of them will do add a cost of, of living, and then some of them will actually increase, um, every year. So I think that's.
So what version do you have that called it?
For supervisor, I said, um, fifty four, it's solid fifty four, plus, plus the supervisor gets that additional one thousand dollars a year, so it'd be going up to.
So if you take cost, if you just do cost of living, is nineteen point forty eight percent over four years.
Well, I've been looking at the assessor's salary.
And the next one was, uh, was you for the assessor?
Was I have for the assessor?
One point six.
I put it at a hundred and thirty thousand, plus, um, but then I also thought about doing the whole CPI thing too, for the additional, like, moving out, you know what I mean? Cause I mean, I'm just looking at the number straight across, I'm not thinking about who the person is or anything like that, we are the second highest paid for your assessor in the smallest township.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I'm just, I'm not.
In the smallest staff, a third of the staff of any other township.
I agree, I understand that, I'm just looking at the, the chart, okay?
So what, so you, so you plan one thirty, and then the next year another's, what, you plan to step it, is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct, so like, kinda like Bloomingdale did it, uh, plus CPI or two point.
So it would be one thirty, then what?
Plus CPI or, or two point five, the lessers, whichever comes out.
But see, I'm missing out on, four years where I'm, where I was frozen, so I'm missing out on all that cost of living.
But who's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't say this, Mark, who's to say, you're gonna be the next assessor?
I'm, I'm not saying that, that's what I'm saying, that's why they did it for four years, take politics out of it, take everything out of it, same salary, cost of living, that's all I'm asking for.
But, right, but if you're.
So your number was?
But let's see, I'm not the highest paid assessor, we're all pretty close.
It's like, oh, you're up there, uh, you're up there, so, so as far as frozen for four years, there's like, what, how many of them?
So what was the step gonna be then, was it be one thirty year one and a.
Higher, same.
Whatever the CPI is, if you add the one point five, like, whatever he said.
Higher, so.
Like a thousand, I don't remember, but.
So do you know why, um, Naperville has three, three years under that?
So.
Just a year.
I thought it should've been challenged in court. They put a, uh, restriction on if the assessor only had five years of cer- of experience, it was one thing.
Right.
Ten years another, and another thing like that, and I can't believe nobody challenged that.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think you could, you should be able to do that.
No.
I mean, cause you're doing it for the job, not.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So what you, so, so if you want it incrementalized, what, what's your incrementalization, how do you want it stepped?
Well, I would just do this, what we've been doing, so we already know what the cost of living was, we're not guessing. So those four years, and then I'll be frozen again.
So you want nineteen percent, plus nine per, nine point percent over the one twenty six.
So that number is what?
It's, it's like one fifty.
One fifty.
So you want one fifty?
That's costly, that's four point eight seven a year for those past years. And really, it's probably gonna be higher than that, cause twenty twenty four is certainly gonna be higher than twenty twenty, which was one point four percent.
So the stepping, and where would the steps be? Cause stepping is better than nothing, right?
Yeah, it's a better than nothing, but costly, you know. All the other assessors are going for cost of living, so it's, we've had meetings, and that, I don't know what they've gotten, or what, what.
Now, just a reminder too, the assessor also gets a bonus, he's the only one that gets a bonus, three thousand dollars.
Only, not every year.
Not every year, okay, and then, we don't have a par allowance for you either, or for the assessor.
No, and some have par allowance.
And some do have par allowance. Uh, you could turn in your mileage though, correct?
Yes, but I, I.
Yeah, why?
I mean, if I go to Springfield or something, I do.
If you're driving around, you should, you should get that.
So you're saying your family's serving, you need more money, is what you're saying?
But then.
Right?
I, I know it's, I know it's, this goes all the way to twenty thirty though, that's my score.
So, it, would a step be a compromise on what Nicole suggested?
Yes, but see, that, what that does is, I would've liked to have been stepped the whole time, because then I wouldn't be behind, now, I'm already five years behind right now on inflation. So then it'll take me, it'll never, it'll never get there. I'll lose out on the four years of inflation that occurred, which was when it was high. Cause the other years, it, it all, it was low, and that was fine, just, just cause that's what, what inflation was, or cost of living was, but now that that's changed, I mean, it, you know, everybody was fine when it was lower.
You have some experience in this, tons of experience in this.
I mean, I feel ya, Mark, I feel ya, but like, it's hard to tell the taxpayers, like, they're not getting, even over however many years, they're not getting nineteen percent, they're, they're not getting anything, cost of living, you can't, nobody can afford groceries, I'll, I'll ever read about it.
I understand, but.
The price of eggs, the price of gas, the price.
People are getting cost of living, my employees get cost of living.
Well, I don't think many people are getting that.
My son is, so am my wife does, everybody gets cost of living in my.
Not, not, not in the private, not in the private sector.
I think it's wrong, I think, I really think, or supervisors.
I mean, in the private sector, they're not getting cost of living, and the private sector, they're not getting anything.
My sons are in the pri- my kids are in the private sector.
Although it's like a.
Okay, so, I have, listen, I've always brought this up when we've done this. Every year, I was in a union, right, so every year we would negotiate a can, or not, no, we set a contract for three or four years. In the contract, they would negotiate what the cost of living would be. It never went above four percent, it was either three or three point five percent is what we got per year, you know, and of course, well, so in the course of four years, it ends up being twelve percent. Three, okay, so, and here's a prime example, most people I know get that percentage, is three to five percent. No matter what job you're doing, I mean, it's, it's, unless you're a professional baseball player or something like that, but I mean, to me, I, I mean, if, so, so if you took that amount, what's three percent of that amount right there? That one, one twenty six.
Three pers?
Yeah.
Easy math.
Oh, yeah. Oh, waiting on math, Fortune five hundred company that I work for, you're not doing that.
No, 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 that's not happening, that is not happening in the real world.
I have a total of four and a half percent since twenty seventeen.
So, but here, here's my, I, I understand that, and I'm not complaining about my sal- you know what, or the salary for the assessor, I'm just saying, in, in the real world, they're not frozen for four years either. So this goes all the way from twenty. Uh, twenty two to twenty thirty is the period we're talking about, so it's not.
Fifty four.
Well, you know, if you take a look, um, at all of the elected offices, state, federal, county.
Was it four nine?
You, whatever you start at, it's frozen for four years.
Yes, a lot of them, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at any of the county offices, they are, if you're looking at the state, they are, the federal, they are.
And the reason they do that is so they can, so that you're not guessing on what the cost of living is, so you're looking back at what it was, and then correcting there, and then freezing it again.
Yeah, but I mean, so, cause you're talking about the real world, all, all, like I said, the state, the county, and the, uh, federal level, it's, it's one salary and it's for four years. And on here, the only, the, it's actually, I think, what, like, seven of them, uh, Bloomingdale had a cost of living for two and a half percent, um, and.
Is your staff starting to catch up with you, is that what's going on?
No, well, there are deputy assessors that make more than I do, that make more than the assessors.
Here?
No, not here, in the town, in the county.
Because if they keep getting the cost, you were getting frozen.
No, I mean. They, they're not gonna, I'm not worried about that, but they do get, so here's what, they, they got cost of living up to five percent, so when it was, when it was, uh.
Seven.
Seven and six point five.
They got five.
They got five, and I understand that too, because that's what PTEL is, that's what we're capped at, is five percent, as, as far as.
And you were frozen.
Well, I would've been frozen for four years, and another year, one more, twenty twenty five, I'll be frozen also.
Well, it's.
I understand your excitement.
Yeah, but, you know.
I mean, again, I, I mean, don't, don't hate me, okay?
No, no, Mark, I don't, listen.
There are a lot of people who would like to make a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars a year.
So.
It's tough, it's, it's tough.
The assessor job is, eight years ago, the, the Naperville Township, previous Naperville Township assessor did a study. And the assessors are in charge of all assessments throughout township, commercial, industrial, it's the backbone of the, uh, local government, and how they get, how they receive funds. He, there was five hun- in Naperville Township, there was five hundred more public employees that made more money than he did.
Well, that's cause they had good representation. I mean, that's.
Right, and.
That's negotiation.
And.
And Naperville has twice as many properties as we do.
Well, and twice the staff, three times the staff.
Alright, so what do we, is the board, what do we?
No, I, believe me, I don't, I'm not gonna take anything, I, I, but I'm just stating my case here, because I only get, every four years is the only time I can state my case.
Right.
And it's not for me, it's, it's, I just believe that the job, it's not for me, it's for the assessor job.
So, I'm saying, what if we did, um, one twenty six, oh, oh fifty four, okay, and we did, added the twelve percent, and we just talked, you know, I'm sorry.
Well, we just, no, no, it's like, it's like three and a half percent.
Right.
That gives you a new number, whatever that is.
That gives you a hundred and forty one thousand, a hundred and fifty.
Then the next year, you take the one forty one, you do the same thing, three point five percent.
Right.
Then the following year, you do the same thing, so you're, you're basically doing a step with a percentage.
You would end up at the end of the twenty thirty, a hundred and, a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
With almost like a fourteen, a fourteen percent. It was in like a fourteen percent, if you add all four years.
Well, that'd be more.
One, six, that's six, six.
Or three and a half, yeah.
Sixteen percent.
So like it's, I thought by the time you do the bean, no problem, but, right, cause you're just out less, and then you go on more.
Well, it would be, you would, so, what was your, is it about three and a half percent a year?
He, we did three percent, three percent, even less than that, three percent. One twenty six, zero fifty four, plus three percent.
So it'd be time times one point five.
That's two thousand, seven hundred, eighty one dollars and sixty two cents, I took that, and I multiplied it by four, to give me the starting number of the assessor for, it's a hundred and forty one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, well, one forty one, eight forty one to do multiply, but, yeah, it's a hundred and forty two.
Yeah.
But see, that's going forward, so, but the cost of living that I missed for those four years that I was frozen, I would never.
You're never gonna get it.
Never.
Right, you know, but you're still at the top of all the townships.
I mean, I try to get that. I'm not gonna.
But I'm not.
Nobody, it's, 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 you gotta go like, from here to there, I'm not gonna buy lost money from inflation and everything, so, I, I mean, I don't have to worry about this.
So, when, the first time you were talking about, um, for the very, for the first year, by three percent or three and a half?
I did three percent, three.
I did three percent. Or maybe we increase it to three percent, and then we go like Bloomingdale, and then we either go the CPI or two point five percent, the lesser.
I think so she was talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what she, and then if it's going, and then it's a step, and the amount is probably getting under, so.
She was trying to figure it out.
So if we started, just for an example, we started twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six, or whatever your schedule is, and we started at one, a hundred and forty two thousand, okay, and then increased it by, uh, plus CPI or two point five percent, whichever is lesser, then moving forward.
That would be.
You started a hundred and forty two?
Yes.
Um, it's just, just a suggestion, I'm just throwing out ideas.
Well, what's the one twenty six, what's that?
That's what it is now.
That's what it is now, one twenty six.
Yeah, okay, so times that by the three and a half percent, what does that amount to be? Cause I think that's second number, that's your second.
One twenty six, zero fifty four. Times three percent. Sorry.
One twenty nine, seven.
Thank you.
And then the next one would be one twenty nine times that, so you're, so the one twenty nine.
Plus a three percent.
No, but, okay, but that's what it comes out to, one forty one after four years, twenty thirty.
Correct.
No, no.
Correct.
Because now you take the one twenty nine, and then you times that by the three percent, that's gonna give you what?
One thirty three, a hundred and thirty three thousand, and then the next.
Okay, so you just add the one forty one.
It's gonna be a hundred and thirty seven.
It's one forty one, eight hundred, if you did straight line, it's one forty one, eight hundred, if you did straight line, it's one forty one, fifty or something, so it's.
Do you, you said start at one forty two and then go up three percent?
Yeah, I did, I, I suggested that as well at one point, I did, yes.
Because that, okay, but that's not what you're just saying now, right?
No.
No, I, she, she said where I was, lower.
Cause I'm like, that's, that's. Okay. Okay.
I, I, I just can't, I just can't see any kind of an increase for anyone on this board in this, in this climate, and I, I just can't see it. People can't buy eggs, they can't buy milk, they can't buy gas, and we're gonna sit here and say like, we need, we, you, what, whatever, need a, need a pay raise? I, I'm just saying from my.
I mean, it's just like.
I just can't see it. And, 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 and wait, and, and, and Mark, can I just say one more thing, and I know this is not the private sector, but, cause it's gonna sound harsh.
Four years ago, it's like, eight years ago. Yeah.
If you want more money, get a different job, that's what I would've said to, that's what I would've said to one of my employees like you.
Well, you know, that's, that's not good governance to think that we don't need qualified people to assess property that the whole system's based on.
I'm just saying, if somebody came to me when I was managing, and they said like, I need a raise, I need, and I was like, like, we can't afford it, like, you know, go, go, go get, go get another job, I, I'm not saying that to you, Mark.
I know that, Barb, I'm not taking anything personal, and I don't, nobody does, I'm just.
And I don't mean that in a way, I just, I can't do it, I just can't, you all can vote however you want, I can't do it, I can't do it.
I understand.
Was there a replacement home in Winfield Township, is there average price?
Depends on how much your footage.
No, like, we're, median price is like four hundred or something.
Like four thirty, just like you paid?
Mm-hmm.
So Bloomingdale.
So to qualify, so you have to live in this township to be an assessor, right?
Correct.
Absolutely.
So, to buy a home, what would an assessor need to make to buy a home to live in the community, is that right?
How about a deputy? How about a deputy assessor? No, you don't have to live in township to be a deputy assessor.
Oh, I know, um.
So it's like, you qualify for three times your income, right, so if you make a hundred thousand, you can qualify for a three hundred thousand dollar home? Is that what it is, or is it more than that?
I mean, a four hundred thousand dollar home in Winfield Township is now a starter home.
Yeah.
That's.
Right, so. That's, no, is the environment are having a hard time affording some of the communities they serve in.
What's your point?
Yeah, but, but your, I don't, I don't know what your point like.
Okay. So adding.
If you can't afford to live where you served, that's rough, that's gotta be stressful.
I, that's not, I don't think that's an issue for me, but.
So Bloomingdale started at one.
Well, it's gotta be for, for the supervisor at forty nine.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So Bloomingdale started at one seventeen, and if they got two and a half percent every year, they would've ended up, they would've ended up with one twenty six.
Then get a different job.
So, they would've ended up.
At the same.
Uh, with what you had, and then, but yet those first three years, they were less.
Right.
So, so say they ended up at one twenty six, and, yeah, and that's only two and a half percent, I can't see giving, cause you're asking for, yeah, you know. All other government jobs, elected positions, we're not talking about a union or anything, I worked at the post office, I understand what, I work for a government union, but all other elected positions, other than Bloomingdale, they don't get a cost of living. They get one, and then it's that amount for the four years, so I would say.
Then that's when we did switch it back, and, cause we used to get, cause they would just say, okay, three percent or whatever each year, but then they said, well, some years, it was lean and it wasn't three percent, so then they froze. And then said, well, just look back and take all the, take out of it and just go salary plus cost of living. So the county ones are up every four years too, well, different, they stagger.
Right.
But they, if they vote on their, every four years, a new salary.
Yeah, they, they, the board members, the, all the, you know, the, um, the clerk of the court, all that, it's every four years, you know, unless, you know, we do like.
Alright, can we bring the trustees staying the same? Alright, alright, there we may, move the needle somewhere, okay.
Yeah. Trustees would stay the same.
Yeah, I mean, if we, you know, like.
Clerk.
Three percent before the first year.
Let's add, you wanna make the clerk twenty five, cause he's got.
That's what I have right now.
Cause he's got all the habits, some other duties or anything or not.
Whoever does have that, yes, yeah.
Right, clerk.
Twenty five.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that, that position.
I'll just, I'll just say, I'll just say this, the reason why I did recommend the five thousand dollars, was I find it very, very uneasy for a board to recommend a salary for a person whose budget is five thousand dollars, being five hundred percent of that budget, that is a problem. Now, if you guys feel that's okay, um, then have at it, but that's why my recommendation is the total amount of the budget that you see fit for the clerk's office of five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars for the clerk is what you suggest?
Yes, that's right.
For the budget, not the salary?
No, the salary.
Oh, the salary?
The salary, yes.
So twenty five thousand for four years for the clerk, yeah.
No, he's saying five thousand here.
He's saying five thousand, period, the same amount that we gave him for his budget.
Oh, I thought you meant an increase.
No.
I think we're gonna have some, have trouble getting somebody to run.
Well, I mean.
Well, yeah, well, the thing is, you're talking about, about the budgets, and what we should be.
I was saying that it works.
If first budget's five thousand dollars, then you give somebody a salary five hundred times their budget, well, that's a difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
If you know that, then, then this would be a billion dollars, right, this, right?
The thing is, is that's, that's, that's not even logical, because the clerk's expenses are under the town's expenses, just like, we're getting a salary, but we don't have budgets.
From eighteen, correct.
We reduced it from, what did we reduce it to last time, four thousand dollars last time?
Right, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, hold on, I understand what you're saying, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, yeah, but the clerk doesn't need their own budget, it's under the town's budget.
So, twenty-five per clerk?
Let's do that one time.
You said twenty-five per clerk, I'm saying twenty-five per clerk.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand for all four years, yeah, that works good.
And then we can add some duties like the video recording and stuff like that for the next clerk? In this job description?
Yes.
Okay.
Man, I'm gonna get that new job description for third, that's like spot on, number one, man. Get the list out, let everybody who's running know. Here's the law for elected job of clerk, and here's everything else that we think is.
But we haven't discussed that one, that number was thrown out, I threw a number out, maybe three, no, would you say seventy-eight, nine, or seventy-nine?
Which one's?
I said seventy, no, I just said seventy-four, not supervisor.
I thought you said some other number.
No.
I said fifty-four.
She said fifty-four.
With the additional thousand.
How many, seventy-two-five? I said, I heard seventy-two-five. Where's the seventy? That's why I didn't.
Where's, where's the money coming from?
I have another question, where's, where's the money coming from, that's the other question.
I would like to see eighty thousand, cause I'd like to see the supervisor, the bill, you know, start on, I'd like to see the supervisor actually do the five oh one three C. I'd like to see the supervisor start a senior center instead of giving money to another township. I, so I think we need to pay a, a, a good amount of money to get a quality person who's gonna do that.
And when you look across the board, though, I think seventy for mainland county, right, you look at, you have seventy-nine, eighty-four, sixty, fifty-six, sixty-one, ninety, forty-five, forty-nine, seventy-five.
And we're the smallest, let's just go back to the smallest township, like there is, there is no way I'm agreeing to that, there is no way, there is no way. People can't buy eggs, I'm just gonna say this something over and over again, no way.
Now, I'll throw this out of the supervisor's position, in these other townships, they have, in the supervisor's office, they have administrative assistants that make more than all.
Yeah.
Well, they have a lot more staff too.
They do, they got tons of staff, Nicole doesn't, I mean, they have a bookkeeper, she, the bookkeeper, she's not an administrative assistant.
Yeah.
She makes more than. She makes more than.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is some townships are set up different, where the supervisor isn't the full-time job, it's the supervisor.
Yeah.
In a higher, out, everything else, that's just the rest of the county, I shouldn't say the rest of the county, so.
No, I understand, and then some of the highway, some of them are the highway commissioners as well, we'll be all deeper, so I mean. Show that with it too. The highway commissioner I did give a raise to, a hundred and twenty thousand.
What was he at?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven.
So, I would say that's good.
Yeah.
But it all goes back to what are we doing with the assessor and and the supervisor, are we gonna give them cost of livings, or are we gonna keep it frozen? Uh, you know, if it's, if it's the same for all four years, I think one twenty's good.
What if we did a CPI for the assessor and the highway commissioner?
That would be good, I, then I think, I don't think we should start at one twenty then.
Okay.
So the going from Johns would be uh nine percent.
A nine percent.
Right, so.
So where again, where again is the money coming from?
That's.
Where is it coming from, or is it gonna do a tax increase, is that where the money's coming from? On our constituents who are like poor West Chicago, and poor area, poor Warrenville, like they can't again, nobody can buy gas.
I can tell you, levy over the next four years. Five percent every year, next four years.
We're, we're just like now, I, 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 I don't get it.
With our increasing VAs, there's still an increase in, or not?
I don't get it.
Well, there's unit construction, and the, these salaries are not.
I don't get it, I don't get it, it's ridiculous, it's just ridiculous.
Roll it at the board, see if it sticks.
Just ridiculous. I hope like the three people who are watching this YouTube video are not listening.
Going from one oh seven to one oh twenty is twelve percent.
Okay.
If Johns went from one oh seven to, I think John and I should be at the same thing, same increase.
Okay. Well, we we have a start to it, everyone put your mind to it and go from there, we don't have to have a decision tonight, we have to have a decision now, okay, so.
Yeah, and I think John knew that there wasn't gonna be a decision tonight too, he thought it was just gonna be discussed, otherwise he would have been.
Yes. Correct, correct. It was good discussion, thank you guys, appreciate it.
And it doesn't, seriously, I don't take any of this personally, you just, my point of view is I had to get one, I'm frozen until twenty thirty. And if I didn't get a raise now, I would have been frozen from twenty twenty-two all the way to twenty thirty.
And I mean, again, that's the job you chose, that's the job you keep being.
I know, but doesn't mean I, that I.
But, but that's the job you chose, and that's the job, and we're not talking about deserving, we're talking about people who can't buy gas, we're raising, we're raising their taxes.
Don't deserve to get a cost of living.
And the other elected positions don't get a cost of living, so it's not a matter of.
Every four years they do.
Well, either, but it's not every year, they're getting an increase.
No, in every four years.
I'm gonna be looking, I'm gonna be looking at the budget, looking how we can actually afford, what resources we can and what we can't, okay, so that's what I'm gonna be looking at, just to throw that out there. Okay, action G, discussion and vote on determination letter authored by Michael Iommi dated July fourth, twenty twenty-four, in response to the ethics movement.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until January or February, when we can see the letter, where's the letter? I I can't, I can't discuss or vote on a letter I haven't seen.
Why you said the letter in here? Well, you know what, I um, I'm gonna make a motion to discuss it. Well, we have a, we have a mo, we have a motion to to table until January or February.
Yeah, gotta, gotta, yeah. Well, you're voting.
Do I have a second on Barb's motion?
Why so far out?
Why, yeah, why then?
I don't know, why not, why not, where is it, I don't know.
How long does it take to get the letter, the letter's right here, you can, the, yeah, the, the letter's right there.
You can get the letter right here, but.
Well, but it's not here, so we're not discussing it or voting on it tonight, alright, okay, alright, next.
We can have a letter by a leave tonight, we can talk on it next month.
Well, we can, I, you know.
I mean.
Alright, I'll change it, I'll make a motion to table this until October.
We see the letter.
Till we see the letter. Are you even tabling the discussion?
Yeah, cause what are we talking about?
Well.
They haven't seen it.
Well, you don't have the, you don't have the discussion.
So we should, so we should have seen.
Then we have a motion on the table, I have a second, yeah.
Hold on a second, yeah, okay, I wanna add.
I'll make the second, I'll make the second, it's time out, I'll do the second, the table until October. Any discussion? Go ahead, Judy, any discussion?
Yeah, it's, you don't even know what it's about, um, and even if you decide to table the vote, it's silly to table in the discussion. And actually, if you tabled the discussion, I'm gonna bring it up under old business, because it is old business.
That's what it will be in October, it will be old business.
But it's old business now, because we've talked about.
I mean, we already went past old business, you're not in charge of this meeting, I am, okay?
Well, but that's, but I'm saying it is old business.
Alright, let's take a vote on everything then.
So, yes, please.
Trustee votes, aye, trustee anchor, no, trustee Lucas, trustee elect, supervisor.
No. Aye. Aye, motion passes to table until October. Even the discussion.
Department reports, yes, department reports, Mark.
We gave the chance for discussion.
Um, we are getting ready, well, we'll close our books probably middle of October, that's when our assessment notices will go out. There's been still some issues with the county and the new Tyler system, been delaying some things, but hopefully we got all that figured out, and there's, we're not gonna be the gaining fig, we're gonna be like the fourth township that closes. That's all.
I have something real quick here to back up here.
We don't know backup.
Well, I don't know backup, but she made saying, made a statement, you made a statement, I don't remember hearing a statement for discussion.
We're just doing. Yeah, I made a discussion as soon as.
No, I just heard the whole, she voted to table it.
And I seconded it, and there was discussion, and there was discussion.
And then there was another discussion, so.
Judy's made some statements, I made some statements, and we all moved on.
Nobody discussed anything, she motioned to table it.
Well, yes, yes, she motioned to table it, I seconded it, then there was a discussion, and then there was called.
Discussion that the one, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
No discussion on the letter?
Correct.
Okay.
August reports for me, we had two hundred and thirty-four calls, sixty-seven letters were sent out for Thanksgiving, forty-eight letters were sent out for Christmas, back to school, we helped twenty families. And then GA applications and EA applications, a total of ten, um, completed specifically for food and for rent. In August, we had a hundred and fifty-nine riders and two hundred and eighty-four stops for the bus, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Four, four requests this month, and we have continuing to work on two open ethics.
Okay. After that, motion to adjourn?
Can I, uh, before we do that, can I uh ask the clerk a question on his department report?
Sure.
Okay, um, there is a procedure to follow that when you tell the board when you're going to close something, and that didn't happen, so I'm wondering.
That wasn't part of the ethics ordinance.
Uh, yeah, if you, there, it is.
Right, that was added after the fact, that was never part of the ethics ordinance that was ruled by the tender of the Attorney General's office.
What do you mean it was after the fact, this was in effect when you closed the other one, so are you?
What's your point?
My quest, I'm, my, I have a question.
What was the date of the complaint?
The question is, are you going to follow this?
No, the date of the complaint was six thirteen twenty twenty-three, was this in place on six thirteen twenty twenty-three?
No.
No.
It does.
This was in place in five, maybe?
Of course it was.
So is our board meeting, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, any agenda item must be submitted in supervisor by Wednesday before the board meeting, or later than four thirty P M. This allows for publishing time to our website company, and not to be charged over ten hours. I'm just saying that, but obviously.
Well, we keep playing games.
I'm motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by trustee elect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing at four, seven forty-three.
Again, to the three people watching, some of the people on this board wanna raise taxes, so. Keep that line.
Well, if the meeting is closed, I don't think we need to have a violation of the open meetings act right now.
There's no violation, any open meetings act, right?
Judy, do you have your, your folder, or yeah, I'm sorry.